Good evening, everybody. I'll call this meeting to order. And to start off, my name's Dan Downey. I'm the revolving chair for this committee. And we have Mayor Burrow, Henry Eusterhoff, Earl Brayden, Rob Smith, and Eleanor Renaud. So I'd like to have a mover and a seconder for adoption of the minutes. Your adoption of the agenda. Eleanor, Earl, all in favor? Any disclosure of interest? None? Moving on to the adoption of the minutes from the committee of the whole February 24th. There was no mover or seconder. So can I get a mover and seconder for those seven minutes? Councillor Smith and Mayor Burrow. And everybody in favor?
We have to correct something, David?
Yeah, we do.
There's a yellow mark. So that correction, as I said, I mean, as the correction is underneath the Eastern Care of Wardens Caucus Resolution dated February 10th, 2025. We needed a mover and a seconder. We got into quite a discussion, a good discussion on it. And I believe it was Mayor Burrow and Councillor Renaud that moved a second. We didn't catch it in the minute, so we can have a mover and a seconder for that. Then we can pass the year.
Now, as per. So all in favor? All right, so we have two delegations tonight. The first one is the Highway 401 project from Mallory Town to Brockville. And Greg Cook and from StanTech and Dave Brake from the MTO, and we're supposed to present.
Well, they're on the screen.
They're both on the screen. So welcome, folks. And the floor is yours.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name's David Brake. I'm a senior project manager with the Ministry of Transportation here in Kingston. Greg Cook from StanTech Consulting and I visited you back in September to discuss the planning study on the east side of Brockville. So we returned tonight actually to talk to you about a different study on the west side of Brockville, really from Mallory Town to the west limit of Brockville. Greg's going to go through some slides and feel free to ask questions while he goes through them or wait till the end and we'll endeavor to answer your questions as best we can. So with that, I'll leave it with Greg to go through the slides.
Okay, thanks, David. And can everybody see my screen?
Yeah.
Okay, and you can hear me okay?
Just one sec, we'll raise the volume a bit.
Don't get too loud and trade.
Okay, try that.
Okay, sorry, you guys, you're hard to hear on your end. So I'm assuming I'm good to go?
You okay? Is that good? Okay.
Okay, well, thanks very much for the opportunity to present the Highway 401 Planning Study from Mallory Town to Brockville. So what we want to cover this evening is the study purpose and process, the alternatives that we've been looking at as part of the study, the consultation program that's part of the study, the schedule, and then hopefully we'll have some time for some questions. So the study purpose, so as David mentioned, the Ministry of Transportation has retained StanTech to undertake a planning preliminary design and class environmental assessment study for the Highway 401 corridor essentially between Mallory Town and Brockville. So part of this study is in the adjacent township front of Young and about half of the study is within the township of Elizabeth Town, Kitlee. And the purpose of the study is to identify a recommended plan that addresses replacement and replacement, replacement and/or rehabilitation of bridges. So the bridges are really the main focus of this study, the structural, the bridges and structural culverts. But we're also going, we're also looking at the Highway 401 footprint for the ultimate six lanes and eight lanes. So that's just part of the long range planning. When we're looking at the structures, we really need to know what the Highway 401 corridor is going to look like, given that these structures will be designed for about a 75-year lifecycle. So part of the study includes the planning of 401. This is just a map or a key plan of the study area. Spent too much time on this, but it speaks for itself. And just to flag, there are a couple of adjacent studies that have been recently completed or that are underway, including the study that David mentioned, the Highway 401 planning east of Brockville. So there's a link to that website. And then further east, another Highway 401 study that was completed a year or so ago, further to the east. And there are some actually newer studies that are also underway along Highway 401 within the region. So we're following the class environmental assessment process for provincial transportation facilities. This is the 2024 version. And this project falls under what we call a Group B process, which includes major improvements to existing provincial transportation facilities. So given that we're, you know, really focused on the structures, this is appropriate because we are just looking at infrastructure within the existing corridor. And then at the end of the study, there will be a transportation environmental study report that will be prepared and made available for a 30-day comment period. So as part of the study, there are several environmental investigations and studies that are underway that will support and inform the environmental assessment study. So archaeology, cultural heritage, terrestrial ecosystems, fish and fish habitat, noise assessment, erosion and sediment, air quality, contamination in groundwater. So these are all kind of existing condition type studies that form part of the baseline and the basis for evaluation of alternatives. So as part of the study, we do identify problems and opportunities. So similar to the study purpose, but this really, you know, defines the framework for, you know, what are we looking at? What are the issues and what are the opportunities? So what are we trying to solve here? So as I mentioned, the primary focus of this study or the primary problem is that many of the structures in the study area are nearing the end of their service life. You know, they're mostly constructed in the late 1950s and they require rehabilitation, you know, there's kind of ongoing maintenance and rehabilitation. But ultimately, we're looking at how to replace these structures. Kind of secondary problems, the ministry knows from past experience that the existing Highway 401 platform is generally not wide enough to accommodate traffic staging when these bridges need to be rehabilitated or replaced. So it's a bit of a challenge. And then the third point is the interchanges also require some improvements. So again, when we're looking at structural planning, the interchanges typically include structures. So we need to look at the interchanges and the long range planning for our interchanges to design the structures appropriately. So the opportunities or the potential solutions are to develop appropriate rehab or replacement strategies to maintain the safe operation of the highway corridor, both for the current and future planning horizons, identify the ultimate footprint for Highway 401, so the ultimate six-laning and eight-laning, which will help with staging as well as what the bridges need to look like in the future. And then thirdly, develop appropriate interchange alternatives to accommodate the long range planning and then to, again, so that the bridges can be designed appropriately. So we have been developing a range of alternatives that generally align with those opportunities. I'm going to run through them quickly. So the first slide here is a project overview or a key plan. The little blue flags, I appreciate are probably hard to read, but those are generally, they generally point to the areas of interest that we're focused on in this part of the study. The top half of the graphic here is mostly in the front of Young Township to the west. But that study, that part of the study area does include the Mallory Town, Mallory Town Road interchange and underpass. There was the Jones Creek culvert and the Sherwood Springs Road interchange. And then the bottom half of the plan here is more focused on Elizabeth Town, Kitlee Township. So that includes the Thousands Island Parkway interchange and the structure. A horizontal curve here, you know, adjacent to the Butter Nut Bay community that is, there's an opportunity to improve that curve because it does affect the structure at the County Road to interchange. And then, of course, the County Road to interchange ramps as well, we're looking at, again, in an effort to design that structure for the 75-year lifecycle. And then further east, there's a structural culvert and then a CN Railway overpass and then the Lynn Road overpass. So again, we're focused on these elements, so these structures mostly, and any infrastructure that's associated with the structures. But as part of that, we are looking at the six-lane and eight-lane footprint for the entire corridor. So the next couple of slides speak to that footprint or the, I guess we'd call it the cross-section of the highway, which is currently four lanes, two eastbound lanes and two westbound lanes, kind of shown in black here. We've divided the study area up into different sections that are, kind of have some commonalities. So section one, three, and four, four being in Elizabeth Town, Kitlee Township. Common thing here is they all have an existing 22 and a half meter wide median. So two lanes in either direction separated by a 22 and a half meter wide, generally grass median. So the alternatives here for widening are to widen everything to the outside. That's alternative one. Because of the wide median, it does provide an opportunity to widen to the inside as well. So alternative two is widening one lane inside and one lane outside to minimize property impacts on the outside. And then the third option is to use, you know, pretty much all of that existing median and build the or construct the new lanes entirely within the median. So widening entirely to the inside and that would leave a narrow seven and a half meter wide median. The next section, section two, this has a little bit wider median, has a 30-meter wide median. But again, very similar alternatives to the previous slide. So widen everything on the outside, widen one lane inside and one lane outside, or widen everything to the inside. And because there's a little bit more room here, that would leave, you know, if you widen everything to the inside, that would leave a 15-meter wide median compared to seven and a half in the previous section. And then finally, section five, which is mostly within the township here, the section of Highway 401 has a narrow median. It's generally eight to nine meters wide with a tall wall barrier. So really limited options here in terms of widening. So obviously widening on the outside is the only option here because the median is not wide enough to accommodate widening. So alternative one here is basically just holding what's there now and then widening, just kind of tacking on the eastbound lanes and westbound lanes onto the outside. And then alternative two is kind of similar, but we did look at, you know, compressing the median down to seven and a half meters to kind of match some of the other sections. And then kind of reconstructing four lanes in each direction. But it does, it does require almost complete reconstruction of the corridor to make that work. So we've screened that out from, from future consideration. It's just not an efficient solution. Moving along, so we'll spend too much time in front of Young Township, but Mallory Road interchange. We are looking at, again, the bridge replacement. So this is an underpass where the highway crosses under. To keep this road open during construction would require a new bridge beside the existing bridge. It's like the, a new bridge to the east is the logical place to construct that new bridge and that would allow the existing bridge to remain open during construction while the new bridge is constructed kind of offline. So four alternatives here, first one is basically maintain existing and just kind of reconnect everything to the realigned Mallory Town Road. Alternative two is similar configuration, but adding direct ramps in the northwest and southeast quadrants. So that provides ramps in all quadrants with more direct loop ramps to improve capacity and operations. Alternative three is what we call Parkville B. This is where the highway traffic is required to exit on a loop ramp. It's a little bit, you see it occasionally, but typically reserved for constrained areas where the other quadrants are not available. In this case, we screened this out because it would have significant impacts, property impacts, and not really desirable configuration from high-speed traffic onto the loop ramps. And then the fourth alternative is more of a simple, we call it diamond configuration, no loop ramps, just one ramp in each quadrant. But all, all alternatives would provide full movements in all directions. Moving along, we've called this horizontal curve number six, but this is also where Jones Creek crosses the highway, a pretty significant water course. So the focus here is replacing that structure, which is a challenge because it's a very deep structure. But this alternative, again, when we're looking at the structure, this curve is not ideal. So again, we're looking, is there an opportunity to improve that curve? So if you replace the structure, then you don't preclude improving that curve in the future. So this alternative is really replace in kind with a new culvert and maintain the existing curve and then just have the widening on the outside. Alternative two would be flatten the curve, which pulls everything to the south. Because the creek widens out and it's a pretty significant valley here, this would require a significant, significantly long structure to span that valley. Foundation conditions from previous studies show that that's not a great place to have high fill embankments. And then the third alternative again would provide an opportunity to improve the geometrics or the horizontal alignment, but would replace that culvert with a structure, which is probably easier to do from a constructibility perspective. You know, you can build parts of the structure and then excavate the culvert out after. So looking at those three alternatives at Jones Creek. Sherwood Springs Road again is an underpass where the highway crosses under Sherwood Springs Road. Again, focused on the bridge replacement. Three alternatives, one is to replace it basically in the same location, which would require closure of the bridge during construction and a detour. This would be the kind of the quickest and efficient way to do it. But if there's some reason that we cannot close Sherwood Springs Road, then we're also looking at new alignments to the west and to the east. So alternative two would be a new bridge to the west and alternative three would be a new bridge to the east and traffic could be maintained during construction. Okay, now we're moving into Elizabeth Town, Kitlee Township. So Thousand Islands Parkway, so currently there is a connection between Highway 401 and Thousand Island Parkway. There's basically two ramps that provide access to and from the east. So again, one of those is, includes a structure over the Highway 401 eastbound lanes. So we need to look at how to replace that structure and also look at widening Highway 401 through here. So the first alternative is essentially, you know, widening the highway and replacing the bridge, but pretty much keeping similar configuration. So maintaining similar access to and from the east. And then alternative two, we also looked at potentially providing additional movements here. So adding ramps to and from the west. So this alternative would include a loop ramp that provides, whoops, sorry, provides access from the south to the west and then a direct ramp from the west to the south and then maintains those movements from the east to the south and from the south to the east. So a little bit different looking configuration, but it does provide all of the movements to and from, you know, both directions on Highway 401. It would require two structures over 401 eastbound and westbound. And then alternative three is similar, again, it provides all the same movements, but a little bit different configuration. In this case, the highway traffic would exit on a loop ramp. Access from the south to the west would be a direct ramp and then access from the west to the south, a direct ramp and then access from the south to the east on a direct ramp. So two alternatives that provide, provide full movements if needed. So we, we are doing some traffic analysis as part of this study to confirm if those movements are required in the time horizon.
As you go through our township, could we ask council here if they have any feedback on, I'd say, the next three items? Per item, is that something that you would take in consideration? On the, on the options?
Yeah, sure. If you have comments now, yeah, that's fine.
Just as you go through them?
Sure.
So on that first one, is there any comments on the table in the Thousand Islands Parkway? As to the option?
Mayor Burrow? Thank you, Mr. Terry. Yeah, I think it's always been a little bit strange. It's one of those exceptions where you exit to the left rather than being in the slower-moving lane and looping around. I'm going to reserve most of my comments until a few slides later because I'm worried by, by a potential of linking that interchange with County Road 2 and the way that that would also relate to some of the options around the existing County Road 2 exchange. But, but for what it's worth, I think it would be more natural, you know, locals may be used to this, but certainly for anybody outside the area, it's one of those oddball traffic movement things to be off-ramping to the left rather than out of the slower-moving lane. I would prefer to see Trumpet A or B or something like that that incorporates County Road 2.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a fair, there's, that's a fair comment. During these planning studies, really, we always sort of have to have the do nothing or maintain existing just for comparison purposes to try and understand. We may, you know, while, while I agree that the left off from the lane one or the fast lane is not ideal, there could be significant impacts to incorporate option two or three that we're not aware of right now. We're going to go through a detailed evaluation. So we always sort of keep the maintain existing onboard. Generally, we don't, of course, screen it out just until we complete our full evaluation to understand maybe where, where we're going to land as far as the preferred alternative. But that's a fair comment. I agree. It's, it's atypical to exit as you do there, westbound.
Anybody else on this particular one?
So as far as Trumpet A, Trumpet B, number one, I didn't, I didn't consider keeping with number one. But Trumpet A was one that intrigued me. I agree that, you know, when you're in the fast lane and you're, you're going to exit, exit off, not you to the safest, but I see A being, in my opinion, A being more the appropriate option. Just the ways to figure and also coming off the eastbound. And also, if I'm looking at this right, is there, there's a turning off the 401 on to Thousand Islands Parkway as well?
Correct. Yep, there would be full movement. So yes, eastbound, you would have a directional ramp to go south onto the Parkway.
Yeah, correct. So that's, that's why I was looking at A.
Yeah, for those that have, you know, visited Kingston, the Sir Johnny McDonald interchange is a, is a trumpet B. There was constraints there when that interchange was built because the Cataract Way Conservation Authority lands to the north of the 401, sort of led the ministry to a trumpet B. So it, it does operate well, but like I said, it's, it's a different style of interchange for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll advance to the next slide.
Sure.
Okay, next slide is horizontal curve, nine and 10, that's just the number of those curves, the identifiers. So what we're looking at here is the curve adjacent to the County Road to interchange. Again, that's a less than desirable curve in the existing configuration. And again, it does affect, you know, the inter- And again, it does affect, you know, the interchange and the structure. So again, we're looking at this horizontal curve. And how we could potentially improve it. Alternative one, again, is basically no change to the alignment. And then widening on both sides to the outside. The the issue here is this, because of the widening, it does it does impact Rockview Cliff Drive. So it is, it is a challenging a challenging constraints in this area. It's pretty tight. Alternative two, we're looking at improving that curve slightly to achieve a higher design speed. So we'd improve those curves to eighteen hundred and fifty meters and nine hundred and fifty meters. So there's two curves actually adjacent to each other. So really improving that five hundred and eighty-five meter radius curve, which is the tighter curve. This does shift things to the north a little bit. So it does not impact the adjacent road network, but it does have some impacts on the north side. And then we did look at a much larger radius, something more kind of in the desirable range. You know, if you were building brand-new Highway four oh one corridor, you'd be looking at significantly larger curves similar to at least an eighteen fifty or or maybe even bigger. So we did look at it, but it would have pretty significant impacts to the residential properties in the MTO Patrol Yard adjacent to County Road two interchange. Any comments on this slide?
Any comments?
Thank you. So regarding to number two, when I blow it up, so is the exit for County Road two still there? I don't, it's kind of hard to see in the folder.
Yeah, the next slides actually show the County Road two interchange configurations. Yeah, this one is really just kind of focused on the highway alignment, but there could be, you know, there's different options for the County Road two interchange.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is going to sort of start to spill the beans a little bit to to where I may open it to get when we get another slide or two along. But if if we eliminate any consideration for for the interchange that is there right now, does that open up any opportunities to further improve that curve without going to the extreme version of of number three?
Yeah, potentially, there's always, yeah, we're showing three alternatives here, but yeah, quite often, you know, sometimes there's other solutions that kind of come out in between two of the options, but yeah, I I think that's fair to say there could be, you know, other potential, you know, maybe minor incremental curves, but that could be considered. But it does, it does get into impacting the MTO Patrol Yard there. So there is a bit of a balancing act there.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if if there are some cost savings involved with an idea that that doesn't really appear in in this slide deck. And they could be applied to essentially rejigging the the MTO yard. So it would be a wash at the end. I'm just trying to keep a very open mind for, you know, is there a better improvement than simply number two? Not as extreme as as number three. I think we all are going to agree that the existing curve needs to change. I would like to think that there may be a way of getting it to change more than what's shown in in number two. But we won't know until we get another slide or two ahead. So I'll I'll leave it there for now.
Okay, point noted. Thank you.
Any other comments from council?
Through you, Chair. I just want to say from emergency response perspective that and the safety perspective, I'm sure everyone around the table here knows, we we spend quite a bit of time on that curve throughout the year. Year on, year off, it's always, it's always a very commonplace for us to to get called for emergency response. So so the more it can be straightened out, the the happier the drivers will be in that area, I'm sure. We're going to assume my comment for statistically, the amount of times that we get called for that curve, the straighter the better.
Thank you. All right.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Next slide. So County Road two interchange. Again, the the driver here is the the structure. This is probably the one that will be first in line when the structure replacements start happening. So the existing structure needs to be replaced. Again, it would be likely that we would have to keep County Road two open during construction, which would mean a new bridge on a new alignment. So we looked at both sides, but shifting the the alignment and the bridge to the south side seems to make the most sense. So all of these alternatives show the new bridge on the south side of the existing. And then we have three alternatives here. So the first one is kind of a hybrid configuration, a diamond configuration on the east side and the the south side, whatever you want to call that. But and then a parklot configuration on the other side, just because you can't fit a full parklot interchange at this location. The ramp, the loop ramp is quite a bit larger than existing, and that's just required to to meet current design standards. And just for simplicity, we did show this on the alignment option number two from the previous slide. So again, this these could apply to the other alignment options as well, but just trying to to focus in on where we think we're going to land here. But so this would have some property impacts adjacent to the interchange. And then alternative two is a little bit simpler. It's a diamond configuration on basically both sides, so one ramp in each quadrant. So again, we're doing traffic modeling to determine, you know, ramp volumes and level of service on ramps. At this point, you know, we need to do more investigation. You know, you would be losing a direct ramp here. So the concern with this type of option would be, you know, losing capacity and introducing, you know, left turns onto the highway, which can be problematic if the traffic volumes increase significantly. And then the third interchange or the third option here is I guess in conjunction with Thousand Island Parkway, when we were developing those interchange alternatives, you could see that, you know, alternative two and alternative three were getting pretty close to County Road two. So the question was raised, well, could you just make a connection there? And then close this interchange. So essentially move, you know, the interchange further west. So this alternative would include the, you know, again, the bridge re-replacement on the south side. But it would include closure of the interchange ramps at this location. But obviously, access would still need to be maintained to and from the highway. So that access would be provided via County Road two to the west and then over to the Thousand Island Parkway interchange. So we do have some other slides that kind of show what that Thousand Island Parkway interchange would need to look like, need to look like. But this would only be done in conjunction with, you know, kind of a full movement, full connection interchange at the Thousand Island Parkway.
I'm sure there's some comments from council on these uh these options. Anybody want to step up first? I'll 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 step up then. G C Hudson Supply, which when you get off on County Road two, they're directly on your right-hand side. They're a seventy-seven-year-old company and they're definitely against closing that interchange. And I'll just give you a few quick reasons. One was the patrol branch, snowplow access. Halix Road, weight restrictions. Lynn Road, it's it's a low underpass at the rail bridge. First Street, all of all of Hudson's trucks, he mentioned that they would probably have to go east through town and pick up four oh one at the at the North Augusta Road. And on Courthouse Avenue right now, there is no trucks permitted. And it's basically not a truck-friendly area. He mentioned also that a lot of residents in that end would be affected. There's there's more traffic, he says, that that goes on and off there than you would think. And I also talked to Don DeGroot, who I believe the ministry, they asked him for some comments back when this was being planned and he's dead against closing that intersection. So those are two of the comments I have.
Some of the comments related to traveling east and west, is that with the assumption that's with the assumption that we're not developing a new inner full interchange, the Thousand Islands Parkway? Is there a reason why trucks from G G C Hudson couldn't travel down County Road two and get on at the new Thousand Islands Parkway interchange if we built that? Is there a reason why they would have to travel east or or travel down County Road two to Halix?
Just going out of their way, I guess. If they're heading east, they would want go east to start with. Not sure how far, how far in kilometers it is from the existing interchange to the new Thousand Islands interchange.
Round round number, I'm going to say between a kilometer and a half and two kilometers. Sort of, that's the round number, depending where like where the ramps would end up or not. So but that's why we're here is to understand some of the local considerations. This is good.
That was definitely that was, and and he also mentioned that if the four oh one gets closed right now, it's it's a it's an emergency exit. And it works well. Hills are sweet.
Yeah, thank you. So for traffic, well, and and you already heard the word emergency vehicles, fire O P P, ambulance, paramedics. Yeah, I don't think anyone, wherever, I don't think anyone ever want to see that intersection never closed. And when I look at one and two, you know, number one to me makes a a very clear flow of of traffic pattern. Where number two, as you stated, you know, you'll be crossing over two to get onto the four oh one. But they're just my thoughts. And that that is a major intersection, and I know that you're talking about, you know, probably redoing the Thousand Island Parkway one, but I think, I'm not sure if traffic count has been taken in consideration, but now the traffic just east and west on on two and going east and west on the four oh one, that whole intersection is quite busy. And that's where our our fire services guys usually enter and and exit the four oh one. Anyway, that's achieved. What's that? Anything else? Thank you.
There, bro. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, so once I received a copy of the letter from Hudson's, I reached out. So it wasn't clear to me whether they had seen the full package and and were aware of of the project holistically. So I had a little bit of a conversation with with Andrew. And so once he understood a little bit more about the potential for the fact that the MTO is studying the potential for well, I'll call it comprehensive intersection at the Thousand Islands Parkway, he was not opposed to to that idea. I calculated one point six kilometers and and he seemed quite satisfied with that. He understood some of the benefits that that may bring as well. So he's, he certainly is open to that. His main concern is not not closing it without some kind of reasonable alternative and forcing all the traffic into the downtown corridor in the Rockville and that definitely more true lane for all the good reasons that that they've stated. So he's quite looking forward to the Public Information Center that's coming up towards the the end of the month. If you can talk at some point about the the scope of notification, it's going to go out to the local property owners and like, are we going to advertise this? I'd appreciate it, but but I think I I'm getting an open mind, so long as within that region, there's access to the four oh one. I'm dead set against closing off access to the four oh one near here or or Thousand Islands. I'm still open to the idea of of taking a look at the long-term potential positive impacts of just relocating that interchange over to the Thousand Islands. And the reason for that is it may open up an opportunity to flatten the curve here more than if we try and maintain an intersection here. So overall, there may be greater benefits to to be had. So I'm still open minded.
Yes, I can certainly commit to to the sense that, you know, we the ministry is not looking at removing this interchange at County Road two without replacing those movements at a new interchange at Thousand Islands Parkway. So really, this no interchange option three is tied to the ministry building a new interchange for the Thousand Islands Parkway. So well, you know, we're not looking at, you know, to take away movements or access to the highway. So and Greg, I think we can talk later on about sort of how we're how we're how we're reaching out to the public, as part of the Public Information Center scheduled for later this month. I think maybe that's later on, yeah.
All right, well, carry on.
Okay, so we'll flip back to Thousand Islands Parkway. You know, so this this set of alternatives here is under the premise that the County Road two interchange is closed. So these alternatives all include this connection to County Road two. So again, alternative four is a full movement, car flow A four configuration. You know, ramps in all quadrants, providing movements in all directions to and from all directions. The side road or the Thousand Islands Parkway would exit on these loop ramps and the freeway traffic would exit on these direct ramps. And then the connection up to County Road two, basically keeping County Road two in its same location, but you know, that would provide access to the east over to where the existing County Road two interchange is located. Alternative five, similar configuration for Thousand Island Parkway and the connection to County Road two. But again, a much simpler configuration, a simple diamond configuration with one ramp in each each quadrant. But as I mentioned earlier, we are doing traffic analysis to to look at the capacity of these interchanges relative to the anticipated volumes, because the diamond would have significantly less capacity than a parking way for. And then again, if you're kind of pushing all the traffic, you know, over from the other interchange could be could be significant. And then alternative six basically just provides a direct connection between Thousand Island Parkway and County Road two. So kind of a curved skewed alignment across Highway four oh one. And then realignment of of County Road two to align with the one of the ramp terminal intersections here. So again, all movements are provided. It's kind of a another variation of the purple A four, it's just kind of squashed a little bit to provide a more direct connection to County Road two. So any comments on these alternatives?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Yeah, but reasons that that you outlined, I guess I I sort of got number five as as my last choice. So I'm really intrigued by by number six. I'd be interested in seeing, you know, how that plays out as the studies go on. What I'm really interested in knowing is relative to something that the chair mentioned with regards to G C Hudson Supply. It is, do you have a method whereby you can model traffic which right now is is intending to head east on the four oh one, but heads west on County Road two a little bit in order to pick that one up? Are are you able to actually model that somewhat accurately so that we can better understand AD inconvenience to to our local people, maybe increase in traffic and that type of thing? You know, I haven't been involved in a project such as this. You know, I I haven't been involved in a project such as this, which would establish a completely new location. Uh so I really don't know what to expect out of all of that in in terms of the of the modeling.
Yeah, I think the modeling will tell us two things. So obviously, you know, if you close the County Road Two interchange. Or essentially relocated over to Thousand Island Parkway, there's going to be. Um you know, some shift in travel patterns. Uh so we'd be able to model kind of the traffic volumes um for say on County Road Two. So there's gonna be a change in in traffic volumes on County Road Two, kind of between those two locations. So um obviously, you're gonna have, you know, traffic that was. You know, currently is currently using the County Road interchange and now they're going to travel down County Road Two over to the Thousand Islands Parkway. Interchange, so we will be able to see what the projected traffic volumes will look like. Um in the new configuration. Um so that's kind of the first part of the modeling and then the second part of the modeling. Um we'll get into a little bit more detail on the ramp, actual ramp volumes. So that we can determine how much traffic would use each ramp. And then that will that will feed into the evaluation of the interchange configuration alternatives. So I'm not sure I answered your question there, but uh I gave it a shot.
Yeah, no, it gives me a a good sense of what to expect and and what the modeling is is capable of and uh all of it, I mean, Mr. Chair. So still related to this intersection, but uh from a different perspective. I'm now thinking about the uh MTO patrol yard. Um so so taking a look at the at the MTO system across the province. How how uncommon would it be to end up with a a patrol yard that wasn't immediately attached to a an intersection? So say a one point or one point six kilometer separation between a patrol yard and access to the to the four one. Is that something that in your experience is gonna already be turning off the 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 MTO? Or or is that common enough uh that it doesn't necessarily end up being a big impediment? If there are a number of other advantages that are determined uh to this particular solution as things go along?
Yeah, so we'll we'll consult with our maintenance folks. I agree, it's generally atypical for us, at least in eastern region, to have a. A a travel, sort of out of way travel of upwards to of a kilometer from our patrol garage onto onto the highway. Um but like you said, if there's a a variety of reasons or a number of reasons why it makes sense. Then, you know, we would work with our maintenance staff to make them understand that the this is a viable option and and these are the whys. It may, you know, it may it may uh avoid property impacts, the the traffic, the highway may operate to. In a safer manner, a number of reasons. We'll obviously go through all that analysis before we we land where we're gonna land. But yeah, I I agree, generally, we do are close to the highway. Now, you know, the ministry just recently uh sort of rebuilt that patrol garage with the new salt domes and a new building. So I know maintenance uh staff would be disappointed, I think, to hear that uh if we came up with an alternative that uh. That that took the the highway or a ramp through their new patrol garage. But um it's like out like all the other uh criteria that we'll evaluate, we'll evaluate um. That long distance or the longer distance they travel before getting on the highway. Certainly, uh residents who live along County Road Two between the existing patrol garage and and along County Road Two to the west. May have some comments about uh about plows and and vehicles operating down County Road Two um during snow events. So we'll take all those comments into consideration when we come up with what to do with the patrol garage and and where the interchange will land.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'm just, I'm looking at the thing. And if you're coming. From Brockville on two, and you wanna get on the four one and go back east. So coming from Hudson, get on and you, it looks like you have to do a ninety degree turn. Now follow that red line and I wanna go back east, it looks like a ninety degree turn to. Or am I looking at it wrong?
No, I think if you're traveling west along County Road Two, you will travel through a new intersection with the ramp terminal. You're correct in the sense, if you wanna stay in County Road Two, that movement is changed now. To stay in County Road Two, you will come to that intersection and turn right to remain on County Road Two. Uh if you remain on County Road Two, you'll you'll head towards the Thousand Islands Parkway and take a new inner loop ramp that goes. Uh under the bridge and heads and heads east. So I guess you considered a nine degree, but yeah, you would you would be backtracking a little bit.
Yeah, but if you wanted to get back, if you wanted to get on four one from two, the Parkway won't take anywhere if you're. It it looks like ninety degrees and then you come around a little bend and back on the four on the four one. And if I was a transporter, I wouldn't want a ninety three turn. Left. A ninety degree left turn. See, look, if you're going this way, and you wanna go here, you gotta go down and ramble in there. Oh, okay, so I was looking at it wrong. Thank you.
I think so. Think it's all round.
Okay. I'll just tell you, it looks very confusing.
That's why they're the professionals.
Yeah, I know. Uh so signage, you know, obviously, any any new configuration. Uh when people are used to traveling through one interchange and we if if we land there, we end up moving people to the west. Uh signage and information uh will be important to make sure everyone travels the correct correct uh orientation. So yes, signs will be important at some, like particularly at Parklow, the option six signs will be important, so people understand where they're where they're headed.
Okay, I don't see any other hands, so carry on, please.
Okay, and then uh yeah, jumping further east a little bit. Um so there's a C N Railway uh crossing and the Lynn Road Bridge. Um so we've shown these on on one slide, those bridges are 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 close together. Um so again, because we're replacing bridges on, you know, some geometry that is not quite ideal. Or, you know, if you're building a a new highway, uh we are looking at uh an alignment option here. Um but option one is basically maintaining the existing alignment and then replacing those bridges basically. Um you know, in kind. Um but al- uh alternative number two. Uh would it would flatten that curve a little bit. Um so. The existing geometry includes actually two two curves, adjacent curves. Uh eleven hundred ninety meter radius and twelve hundred thirty meter radius, but this would be. To replace it with kind of one single curve with a larger flatter radius. So that pulls everything down to the south a little bit. Um generally, the the rail crossing would be pretty close to its existing location, maybe a slight shift. And then the Lynn Road structure would shift uh to the south, which actually could help with, you know, building that new bridge and staging. Um construction. Um and then on Lynn Road, um you know, we look at replacing structures kind of over an existing road. Uh there's kind of two ways to do that. One would be to to close the road entirely. Um which just allows the contractor more access and generally, uh you know, quicker means and methods to. To replace the bridge, uh but obviously, there's um, you know, a disadvantage of introducing a. Uh a local detour. So if you wanted to kind of get across the highway on Lynn Road, you would have to use the local road network going back. You know, over to to Brockville to to get to the other side of the highway. Um and then the other option would be to kind of keep the traffic open. Um but that does add some constraints for the contractor and um you know, extends out the the duration of construction. And typically costs, so. Any questions on C N Railway and Lynn Road?
If you close it at Lynn Road, how's that gonna affect you as the chief?
I made my comment this afternoon in this presentation that we already had, so. So yeah, basically, we're a straight shot into that area, the township from our station one in Lynn. And, you know, a fifteen kilometer detour is just really not acceptable and uh. And I don't uh think that our residents in that area should have to uh. Be faced with that for protective services, so that was my comment already made this afternoon earlier, so. Um we've already, we we just came through a full construction season without access to the other end of the bottom of County Road Two. Luckily, it came through fairly unscathed, but uh was a major inconvenience for for emergency access. That's my comment on that.
Mayor Burrow? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um yeah, I don't I don't know that either of you two gentlemen were involved with the uh Halix Road. Uh overpass reconstruction, but this is this is a little bit of deja vu. Um in that particular case, I don't have the um the average daily traffic count often at times here for for Lynn Road. Uh and and the effective detours. Uh but I know in in the Halix Road case, uh we started to get the attention of the MTO when I I put it in numbers that. That you could relate to easily. So in that particular case, every month of of complete closure of Halix Road. Was the same as closing the four one in one direction for a twenty four hour contiguous period. Without any bypass lanes or anything, you know, just straight on full closure of the of the four one. Um so so once once I was able to put it into that perspective, it seemed to to generate a different picture in people's minds. So my question is, looking at at number two here, am I interpreting this correctly? That that the bridge would be in in a new location further south. It would improve that curve and by the bridge being in a new location, it could be built. Without the full closure of Lynn Road? Did did I understand all of that correctly?
Yeah, I think that's that's correct.
All right, so I I lean heavily in in that direction for all of the lessons that we learned uh with with Halix Road. You know, we had a real uphill battle to sort of make our our concerns understood. It's not that they weren't heard. I just don't think that they were being fully understood to people that don't don't live rural traffic uh every day. In an urban center, there are quite often, you know, a number of different detours that can handle additional traffic. Whereas as you can see from our road network here, uh you know, the a simple closure now creates fifteen kilometers. And and that just wouldn't happen in a in an urban uh roadscape. Um so I really, really favor number two. Uh never mind that the safety of the four one, which I think is important, but I'm looking through through very uh local and and selfish eyes right now. For our own residents and our uh our emergency response uh people. But if that's the option that allows that road to stay open, I'm all for that option.
Yeah, my only clarification there is is you could keep, you know, for both options, you could keep it open. Um you know, option one might be a little bit more challenging. Um but uh just because it's a little more constrained, but both options, you you know, you could keep it open or you could close. It's just um, it's really just, you know, about providing a contractor with with more access and not having to deal with uh live traffic. But I understand your point.
Yeah, no, that's that's certainly a fair comment, but you know, um certainly the consideration for a full closure of Lynn Road, I I understand the comment. But even if we go with that, just wanna make everyone aware that if you go with that option for Lynn Road opener construction. There will still be probably short duration overnight off peak times where Lynn Road would have to be closed to install formwork. To build a new bridge, to install a girder. So there would still be some short duration. Like I said, we'd work with the township and work with the with municipalities to understand sort of, but that's really a detailed design, a sort of future design phase. You know, Stan Tech won't be tasked with coming up with how many of those short duration closures, but they're just knowing how construction work. There probably would be some short duration work closure to to sort of facilitate managing or keeping it open most of the time, so.
Yeah, fair point.
Just just for clarity, so when I look at number two, I'm looking at number two saying there may be. Pretty bit of construction going on there. That's where I couldn't understand how you can say we're not gonna close down our road. Where number one is maintaining existing. Uh curvature, so can you explain that?
Well, I I'll take a shot at it and Greg can correct me, but certainly with with option number two, that the highway moves to the south. So what you could do is maintain traffic generally on the existing highway four one alignment while you built the new bridge. South of the existing bridge or a portion of the bridge, south of the existing bridge. Um we do, you know, with formwork and and safety things, you're you are able to work over. You have construction taking place over a live lane. Um so you could have formworks and such, where you'd have workers working over top of the live Lynn Road underneath. Once that section of the bridge or the bridges, because we're talking the C N as well, might be going on at the same time. Once those bridges are are built, um or the portion of the new bridge are built on the south side, we'd move traffic onto that new structure. Uh and then build the new section to the north piece of the of the bridges. Um I think that's how we probably would stage it, Greg, but.
Yeah, yeah, without getting into too many details, yeah, concept.
Yeah.
Thank you, um Mayor Burrow. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to um to follow up on on your uh clarity around the fact that. That even even generally leaving the road open, there would still be times when it was closed that that offbeat and that type of thing. I didn't wanna seem unreasonable. Uh so I think if we can prove that we've made every reasonable effort to mitigate the risks. Understanding that we're not gonna eliminate them a hundred percent. Sure, that there may be uh some consecutive nights where somebody really has bad luck and something happens and and emergency services has to do with fifteen. Longer detour. Well, you know, things happen in life. It's it's unfortunate for sure. But it's not like saying, well, for construction season, we know that we don't have that route available to us at any time of of the day. Or for several months. You know, that's a very, very different conversation to have with the residents, then they're gonna minimize the inconvenience. And so that that risk window really does come down to something small where it's reasonable to hope you you never have to use that detour during that time. So I appreciate the 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 comment. I I didn't, sorry if you interpreted the.
No, no, I I. No, to- totally, can thank you for the consideration. It's just, I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware that, you know, the ministry would, if that option is selected. And you know, certainly we're getting strong support for that option from the township. Um there there still would have to be some likely short duration closures. I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that, that, you know, so. Thank you for the comment.
Okay, that's uh no more comments at the moment, thanks.
Okay, we're getting close to the end here. Um so drainage improvements, this is more of a general slide. There are four existing structural culverts um within the study area. Uh the strategies we're looking at are replaced with uh a new covert. Uh that's generally a good long term strategy. We're also looking at potential, you know, rehabilitating existing culverts with uh with extensions. To accommodate future widening. Um in some cases, like the deep uh covert at Jones Creek, it might be more efficient to replace with a bridge, actually. So that is a is a viable option. Um and then uh kind of a fourth option is rehabilitating the culverts and then, you know, utilizing retaining walls. Um to accommodate future widening, but um anyway, these these are obviously less interesting than than some of the bridges and interchanges. Okay, so in terms of, so that that uh yeah, that kind of wraps up the alternatives. Any final questions on alternatives?
I don't see any.
Okay, it's Mr. Chair. So yeah, just in terms of consultation, uh you know, in a general way. Um so there are public notices through uh newspapers, websites, um mailouts, those kinds of things. Uh to make the public aware of the the study and kind of the the major events, including the Public Information Centers. Uh there's a project website called Highway Four One Mallory Town to Brockville dot C A. Uh we are uh having two public information centers uh to reach out directly to the public. Those are both in person. Um the first one is really focused on the alternatives. And then the second P I C is focused on the preferred plan and the mitigation. Um improvements. Um we are undertaking indigenous community engagement, uh council presentations. Uh we do have a municipal technical advisory. Uh committee, uh we have four meetings uh scheduled. We had our second meeting today. Uh we are meeting with or consulting with other external agencies, other ministries, uh Parks Canada, et cetera. And then kind of the the final. Um. Is consultation or formal uh point of consultation is the Transportation Environmental Study Report. Um that will be available for a thirty day comment period. So this is just a list of some of the more specific stakeholders and partners that have been contacted during the study. I won't go through them all, but a pretty extensive list. So just in terms of schedule, sorry, is there a question? Okay, in terms of schedule. So notice the study commencement that was back in April 2024. Our first MTAC was in October of 2024. Second MTAC was this afternoon. And then our first public information center is scheduled for April 23rd. Following that PIC, again, we will, you know, take the feedback and evaluate the alternatives. And come up with kind of a draft preferred plan that will take back to the, the MTAC in the fall of 2025. And then ultimately take that preferred plan back to the public at PIC number two in the spring of 2026. And then circle back again with the MTAC after that second public information center in the spring of 2026. And then planning to publish the transportation environmental study report in the summer of 2026.
Can I see it? Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. So just thinking about the schedule and going back to something you said with regards to the consultation, you mentioned mailouts. So can you, can you give me a sense of what areas are going to be covered by those, those mailouts? And when they're going to be going out, given that we've got April 23rd coming up in a couple of weeks, I think?
Yeah, so there, there is a Canada Post mailout going out. I don't have the schedule in front of me, but everything is pretty much going out this week.
And a post will be going out on the ninth, April 9th, I believe.
Okay, and can you tell me, are, are those addressed pieces or, or is that basically a bulk mail drop in, in a particular set of postal codes?
Yeah, it's a, it's a Canada Post, yeah, bulk mail out. You know, it's a pretty significant area, but adjacent, you know, including adjacent to the, the study area.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Just for information purposes, prior to PIC two, anybody who has property impacted by the technical plan would receive an addressed letter with an invitation to meet with this, with the MTO and Stan Tech to discuss the, the property requirements. But that's, we haven't determined those needs yet until we get closer through the evaluation. But those wouldn't just be ad mail. Those people would receive personalized letters to, to meet with an offer to meet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so yeah, Public Information Center one, so that's kind of our, our next milestone, April 23rd. Four to seven PM at the Royal Canadian Legion. And as I mentioned previously, the, the main purpose is to present the alternatives that we presented tonight. Also display and seek input on existing conditions. And we will also have a draft evaluation criteria. So I didn't get into the evaluation, but you know, once we, after Public Information Center number one, and we collect feedback, that will form part of the input into the evaluation process along with the environmental studies and other kind of baseline information. So at this point, we'll just present the proposed evaluation criteria to explain, you know, how the alternatives will be evaluated. So that, that concludes our presentation for this evening. There will be an external agency meeting immediately prior to the PIC, so that will be from three to four PM. So certainly, certainly council is welcome to attend. It's in the same location, you know, to be essentially the PIC setup. But we will open the doors an hour earlier to allow agency staff and, and council to come in and view the, the information before it's open to the public at four. Okay, any final questions?
Don't see any hands up. So this was well done. A lot of information and we appreciate it.
Well, I certainly, Greg and I certainly, and the project team certainly appreciate making the time to meet with us. And, and certainly we invite you to provide comments at the PIC directly to Greg and I. I think our email addresses are available. If you can't get them, I'll get them to you or a phone call, or even a phone call. But certainly, you know, we look forward to sort of working through the, through the study and coming up with a technically preferred plan that hopefully works for everybody.
And we really appreciate the, the time allowed to, to ask questions throughout the presentation. Typically we get 10 or 15 minutes, so this has been very helpful and direct, so we appreciate it.
Very good.
Okay, thanks again.
Have, have a good evening.
Thank you, thank you. All right, so we'll go on to five point two. We have another delegation. The unused barns at Rouse Corners, Jody Hall.
I will try to do it. I am here to respectfully request the opportunity to repurpose the two older buildings on the Rouse Corners fairgrounds. My family and I have just recently taken on our second rescue horse, who has been for years mistreated with lack of food, lack of just basic care. While we had planned to build a new brand new barn ourselves, the cost has become a challenge, given the current economy. If we are able to repurpose these buildings, it would significantly help in allowing us to rehabilitate our current rescue horses and help to offset the cost of the new barn as well as their rehabilitation. And hopefully in the future, if need be, and the need arises, to be able to help another one someday. We're fully prepared to handle all the dismantling and transportation of them ourselves. And rather than the building is going to waste, we would love to be considered for giving them a new and meaningful purpose, providing comfort and protection to these amazing animals. We do also have a senior committee that would also benefit from a nice little shelter and building to be in during the body. We do have, we get along quite well at home. Like we have shelters and need tubes and stuff for the animals to go in and out as they please. But the benefit of one of these buildings would be that especially in the winter months where it gets dark at four, four thirty in the afternoon and there's still lots of work and rehabilitation and stuff that needs to be done on them. Vets coming in, barriers coming in. They don't always like to stand out if it's raining outside and they'll go the animals out in the pouring rain. So we would love to be considered for these buildings.
Okay, thank you very much. So you want to dismantle the building and relocate it to your property? That's what you're saying? Because they're no, no longer used?
We have been, and then like I am a member of the horse around the club that was there. So we did store our stuff in the ground building. But the other building as well would come into great use if it's just going to be torn down. We can make use of those.
Okay. Do we have any questions around the table?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So through you to our administrator. I can't think of another example of something like this, either my time in the public chairs or since becoming elected. So what would the next steps look like for something out of the ordinary like this?
Thank you, your worship. Do the policy for disposal of assets, though I'm not quite sure where this sits within asset list. But also I guess have a question. Are you a not-for-profit or a commercial organizer?
This is just for personal use.
This is a commercial organization. That may change something a little bit or a lot. We know whether the current leasing the land is amenable to letting those units go. You may need to check with them just to make sure that they're happy. Their intent for the site is quite extensive, so I don't think that they're necessarily going to want those buildings, but we would probably need to check with them.
Would you own your take to do that?
Yes.
Okay, so that would be a first step. Councillor Brayton?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say that we own a lot of buildings. So what is the deal with the, with the people that are taking over that property?
Bear Bales, you have an answer for that?
Yeah, I do only because I was pretty involved with, with them coming via the, the same words board. So, so in easy strokes, their interest in their lease is for the land. There was a requirement, given that we had just recently invested in rebuilding the pavilion there. There was a request for them to incorporate that into their design, which they did do. But at the time, their expression was they had no interest in any of the other structures. And we didn't place a requirement on them to incorporate any of the other structures into their design. So I agree that the formality of checking with them, absolutely we need to do that. I, I would expect that they have no interest in anything but the land. And they were amenable to incorporating that, that pavilion beyond that. In their minds, I'm sure the lease is for the land and the.
Agreed. So we shouldn't have any problem, given the way that.
We'll check into it.
Councillor Smith? Through, through the staff with regards to policy or whatever. I know we tore down the fairgrounds, grandstand back in the day was like a demolition at that time. So I, I think if the, if the leasing is in agreement, they don't, they don't want to have them on the property. If, if our procedures are all clear and good to go, I'd give the green light to this individual to take them off our hands. Only if it passes through our, our policy.
Thank you. I tend to agree. If it's, if it's something that you find that would flow through, it would be an easy fix to provide a home for these rescue horses, which is very nice.
Repurposing the building, thank you, Chair. Repurposing buildings is an awesome idea. I'm sure staff will think of it over time, but like you would, would you be asked to sign a waiver? Because going on property to dismantle something, if something fall, we're sucked on mail. Like, would you sign a waiver that we're not responsible for?
Absolutely.
Go ahead. But just.
Yeah, I know. I understand you got to cover.
You understand that, yeah, just. Maybe detail, detail, but somewhere, somebody should say it.
Councillor Redham?
Nothing I have an issue with the idea. I don't. But when we get complaints that, oh, this guy got a bucket of sand given to him by the township, why didn't I? Would there be anything because we didn't make it a public offering? I'm just asking the question.
I'm, Mr. Chair, I suspect that's what your policy is going to tell you or give you advice on as to whether or not you disclose publicly and or put it through a public process of some sort, just so that you have, you've covered yourself, you've done a public process. If anyone comes forward, then no one else goes forward, then you're, you're able to dispose of them that way. But that's probably what the policy is going to say. Not premier of the policy, but a little bit.
Councillor Smith?
And then also to the CEO itself. But since we leased the property out to someone else. And basically the ground is their VC. I would think if they, they're not, if they no longer wants to see the barns on the property. You know, I guess they could take them down themselves as well. And we lease it in for them. But anyways, as I said, as long as they're following the policy, as long as they're being followed, if it passes it, by all means, go for it.
Sure. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, if we own them and if other people doesn't want them. These people want them. See, we own them, own them. We could sell them for a dollar. And I think you'd probably pay a dollar and that would put in their colors. And I would have, you wouldn't have to worry about anybody else complaining about it.
That's another good idea.
So I'm going to have to drive this forward a little bit if I can get a second round of, uh, specifically direct staff to investigate the options available to us to provide the structures to these people at no cost to the township. And report back to the committee, would our next committee meeting next month be super timely by next month's meeting?
Councillor Smith, all in favor? Here we go. You're welcome. Thank you. Moving along, staff reports. Item six point one. Yeah, yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, when you're meeting, there's quite a few. Would you, like, five point one, five point two? Just the state, the what, what, where you are?
Six point one.
Yeah, so then.
You want to put them all together?
No, 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 no. When you come to them, so I know where you are.
Okay, so we're in, we're at staff reports. Six point one. This is committee remuneration comparison. Is there any, any comments with regards to that report? Laura?
Chair, if you can get a member of the second year on the floor.
Pardon me?
Question, member in a secondary, so that you get on the floor for the session, please.
Do we have a member in the secondary to put that on the floor? Councillor Smith, Councillor Oosterhoff, all in favor?
No, we don't. You don't bother to ask for a discussion. So on your piece of paper, you can see that it's the motion that report A dash twenty-five dash point B.
Be received. So.
Counselor Smith.
I think through YouTube, you know, so just uh just have some clarity on the How Road distance going from Cairo twenty seven to forty six, the whole thing. And second concession is going from Hartville to the Augusta Township line or to Sharp's Lane or out of going with that.
Rock and Taylor, let's do the Sharp.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Nolan.
Thank you, Chair.
Through the budget process, we were talking about doing some geotechnical work on How Road. And just want to confirm, Council, that it's in the budget? You still want to proceed with that before having followed the Miller presentation that they did? Whether you are satisfied that you are doing the right thing? So I guess the question is, do you still want to proceed with the geotechnics? So you can move that as part of this process. Mr. Smith.
Thank you. I I am comfortable with the presentation made by another group. I made my point very clear during during other budget discussions regarding to the base of that road. I'm not road guy, I rode the road and driven the road many a times. And from what I'm hearing, what work is going to be done? And they compared it to another road, which I'm well familiar with. I'm okay, okay, with the process that they want to follow. As they know, we had that discussion when they were here. A lot of sidebar discussion while they're here, indicating and showing the conditions that are my concerns worth. And they 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 feel they can verify this township and the residents to do what they said they're going to do. The type of they're doing, that's what he said. So I just heard of that.
Counselor Mr. Nolan.
Geotechnical information wasn't meant for this year. It was supposed to be information of what we're going to do when we actually fix the road. Like the subsurfacing is only a temporary to give us more life. Right? And then the geotech was going to give us the information how we're going to fix it when when this subs- uh micro-surfacing is done.
That wasn't how I understood it. That that was, the plan was to do some geotechnical to decide whether or not we were going to go ahead with the micro-surfacing. That's what the original discussion was, and then Miller came along, they did their presentation. Now Counselor Smith is saying that that's basically satisfies his request to do some test holes.
Like I, I'll sit back here, I'm not a road man. I mean, I we have experts in the room and we have experts in the industry. But I think we have residents and counselors that believe it needs major work, but you can't do that without evidence. I think that's where the geotech is going to give us. Like this micro-surfacing is somewhat of a really good temporary delay till we have the information in line, what we got to do with it permanently. That's what I thought. That may be, I'm totally wrong, but it's all, I'm still in favor of getting the information.
Well, maybe I could ask Royal to just explain one more time about for How Road and then the eighth line, how they, you feel that they're good candidates for micro-surfacing, quickly.
Mr. Chair, you can call the council, I guess, and you're open, right? The discussion was to the request to have the technical done for How Road was to see if it was a suitable candidate for micro-surfacing. And in through the discussion, it was determined that you have the information for the future construction and the justification of actually doing it. It's a, so the process is we're going to sweep the road up, you're going to bring it down into the whole logistics of all the work.
Well, just, you know, I think what the question is, is that people are afraid to go with micro-surfacing. And so what you're telling us is that the construction work you're doing prior is going to basically give us a fairly good road for how many years?
I'm going to guarantee you, Chris, well, we have the, you can read the literature and not evidence presented through budget process and from Millers. But you can expect six to ten years. Again, we don't know because of, but the idea is to seal the road is that we're fairly confident. Myself and Millers that the base isn't moving and most of the problems are due to water infiltrating from the surface. So like leading the asphalt padding with H L two ultra thinning and putting the surface on it, it's going to seal it. Practice for sure. And then that's where you come back in the sixth access and your market hit it again. If you want to do that professionally, surfacing or if in your periods, we did have discussions about that. The costs for that over the term of just re-destructing the whole thing.
Did you have a?
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Mr. Chair, and thanks for these additional explanations. I think part of what we're struggling with here is that this is a major change in direction from what we had. And we want to make sure that the city makers were comfortable with doing that. I think I mentioned during the Miller presentation, this is the point where we're either going to be zeros or zeros, right? Like if we go ahead with this and it works well, then then people are going to appreciate, you know, that we spent their their tax money wisely and restriction development. If one of these projects goes really south, then, you know, the phone is going to be ringing off the hook with, I told you so. Right? So it's kind of a no win situation. So so to that end, I'm I'm going to play a slightly different role as mayor than you may have seen me play often here. The C A O and I have a shared responsibility to represent the people and to represent staff. And and I'm just going over in my mind the number of times that we have asked questions of staff, as we should, to become educated on the whole process. But but while I was very comfortable with what I heard Miller say, I think we would be doing staff in disservice if we eliminated the geotech study. Partially because of the future information provided to us, but also it eliminates a potential shadow over staff. Where if we've put our best foot forward, we've made what we consider to be the best decision. We can always point to the geotech and say, look, even the geotech didn't show that this was what happened. No reasonable person could have predicted a failure on this project. But if we remove that that safety net, given this, that this is our first step into that sandbox. We remove that safety net of doing the geotech, where it hopefully will reinforce everything staff has been telling us. I think we're setting them up for potential failure, and I don't think we should even do it. So I think for this first major project with resurfacing, I would like to see us take advantage of the fact that we already baked the the geotech into the budget. We're not going to go outside our our budget by going forward with it. I think it's important to go forward with it just so there isn't a shadow cast over, you know, our change in direction.
Counselor Smith.
Thank you. I I agree. I'll take one step further instead of just, and not saying that we've got a little of a stretch fund based on what was budgeted, what what we're receiving here tonight. But we talked about How Road being geotech. What about doing line eight? Since we, some of us have got their complaints of line eight, should we do both of those two roads? We've heard the estimate of twelve thousand dollars. Twelve thousand dollars is not a lot of money when you're spending milk. That's how I look at it. It'd be best in our interest, okay, that we have, we have the the information that's going to be probably very educational for all, both on those two roads. Second concession, I'm not worried about it, just a running this situation. I'm just throwing it out there, proof of thought.
Anybody else with comments on the second, oh, sorry?
Right now, staff are trying to get tenders out because if we don't get them out now, the road is not going to be completed. So we we hope that council can make a decision whether the Public Works Department go ahead and issue the tender for the balance of the work on these roads. But I don't think we've heard a definitive answer as to whether we should be tendering for How Road. We would like that soon because otherwise we're not going to get the road done at all.
I think what the mayor was saying was that for How Road, to do some test holes, plus go ahead with the micro-surfacing.
Okay.
And then
That's the clarity.
Yes. Yes, there was an issue. We will have the, I I don't know what happens if if we find out when we do a test hole, that it's just mud down there.
But then obviously they will
Come back, reevaluate the project.
How does that affect the tender if you've if you've given the tender out, you do some test holes and then all of a sudden, you know, can you change course at that point or or how does that work? I'll I'll just ask staff first.
Sorry, through to the council. What is, in our, in our tender documents, there are definitely clauses that allow us to accept or not accept certain parts of a tender or the whole thing as a whole, not necessarily the lowest bidder. All of those things are outlined in our tender document.
Okay. Counselor Nolan.
And like we heard in our presentation, that particular company doesn't want to do anything that's not going to work because they're not sure that on them. I'm assuming that all companies would be like that. They're not going to want to do a job and it blow up in their face because that's word of mouth is their business that's going to hurt them. So I would change that they go ahead with it.
So, okay, go ahead.
Sorry, just just further to that. I I spent some time on the email that the mayor has alluded to that came through to staff. A lot of it is financial, so Public Works staff and I worked together to come up with some answers for this. Would you entertain me just going through it or everybody has seen this email?
It was all sent there.
It was all sent there.
Yeah, if you want to do that, then sure, that would be finished.
You want to settle this first?
So first of the first, the micro-surfacing one, I I'm a little scared that you're saying there's a slush. Because first of all, yes, the surf, the micro-surfacing has come in according to that tender. But we, but Royal has tendered the construction and repairs. So while we are winning right now, we may not be winning after those ten. This is a very uncertain time. There is a lot of stuff going on here and it's scary. We've put our estimates forward based on the information we have now, but we have no idea what the next six months are going to bring. So it's nice to see that Royal was focused on the budgeting here. I'm glad there's a little bit extra there because we may not win on the, that's the first thing. And if you want to deal with, maybe give direction to staff to go ahead with tendering, I think Public Works would appreciate that very much, if you want to do that.
Well, to finish off then, Mr. Nolan asked about the geotechnical. So I think the answer is that we leave that part of it in the budget. And then as far as what Counselor Smith mentioned about the eighth concession, I I think we should maybe you know, decide that at the at a subsequent meeting because that would have to actually get put back into it or put into the budget at that time. So I agree with what you're saying, but I'm not sure if tonight's the time to do that. Go ahead.
I agree, and I think there is a if if these projects you commit under budget, I think there is an appetite to do another road. And staff will come back and ask to do another road if if there happens to be. And I think that that's that's correct in the in the plan.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so if we're able to find savings through the next phase of this tendering. And so I have a tender technically right now, I have tender right now to do the pulverizing. For either of mine, we did a provisional item for today on three, actually, with the part of collaborations with the delegation. And we said if we found savings in the projects, we want to do that, but it wouldn't go forward unless we can do it. Like it's making
Like it's making preparations and plans, so the ground that then when we get to the, the schedule will be in there, so our schedule, things that will be, um, so that we can buy the granular or the capital projects, including our F O B projects. And here to do, um, if we can find a day, if we can get the money. The money there, you guys are willing to let us continue to do the work, but it's gotta be, you will check the balance process, not this. We cut some money, we're gonna, let's help you then.
And, and stay on top of areas too. Okay, so, um, on this particular item number six point seven, that committee recommends to council to award the tender P W two oh two five dash zero five for micro surfacing. Uh, for the township of Elizabeth Town Kidley to contractor number one, Miller paving limited. And that council directs staff to complete the scope definition with contractor one to complete the work approved in the twenty twenty five capital budget. And that council authorized the mayor clerk to execute a contract for micro surfacing P W twenty twenty five dash five with contractor one for the tender prices plus the township's portion of the H S T as presented in report P W dash twenty five dash four five. All in favor? It's carried. Six point eight, supply and apply dust suppression. Can I get a mover and seconder for that, Counselor Renault, Counselor Easterhoff? This goes back to that, uh, earlier email.
Which is, I will speak to the, the financial part of this for sure, and I can say that the, there was a typo. The, it should not pay roadside mowing. Um, so will the public works department adjust the projected volume of product to match the budgets, including that H S T? For example, approximately four hundred and sixty thousand liters from five. Staff would obviously consider this option, among other mitigation solutions, if it becomes necessary. Any changes of this sort would be presented to council. Um, the chart where, uh, the calculations are done to go backwards.
To twenty twenty one?
To twenty twenty one. We were not paying point three seven five per liter in twenty twenty one. There was a tender completed for five hundred thousand liters. As every year since that has been, what has been budgeted for. In twenty twenty one, it cost a hundred and four thousand. Hundred and four, twenty hundred, four, five hundred. Uh, so the volume is not increased, the price is. Um, there's a, the original contract was, yes, for three years, but that doesn't mean they were gonna hold the price at twenty cents per liter. There is C P I considerations on top of which we were in the middle of COVID. So for the, I'm here, see. Twenty twenty one, it was twenty cents per liter. And according to invoices in twenty twenty two, the cost per liter went up to twenty two cents. But in addition to that, they tagged on a fuel surcharge, surcharge of point zero five per liter. This is a total of point two seven. That's what happened in twenty twenty two. And then these surcharges were added to the various invoices in twenty twenty two, but they were never called back. And in twenty twenty three, I, the, Dali or whatever the name of the company that took over dention, they took over. And their initial invoices in twenty twenty three were thirty three cents. And then in twenty twenty four, it was thirty four cents. And now twenty twenty five, we tenders to be thirty seven. I think there's.
I think the question was more to do with the quantities. You, you said it was five hundred because price, you know, it's interesting.
That's just the nature of things. And it has been a real struggle with those surcharges, not just on this. We had a truck, I remember Charles and I trying to fight with them to honor a tender for a truck that they wanted to add stuff on because their suppliers were trying to add on to them. And it was a tough year to try and keep things in check for sure. So, oh, the next, so that's, do you wanna continue on into the gravel maintenance or do you wanna deal with that?
Well, maybe we'll deal with this one, uh, while I had a, yeah, no, we talked with the Juan, he's real.
Josh, well, I'll start. Right now, the five hundred thousand liters is based on an application rate of five, point five meters per square meter. So what we've done is how we got to the former rate that was adding five percent and then just move around and get the one. And at that right now, the tender, the value of that five hundred thousand liters at that three, point three seven five cents per liter gets us to just over a one ninety five. We can reduce it, reduce the quantities to stay on budget, which is perfectly fine. It's just, you have to, to, when Josh and the guys move to do it, each road gets a little bit of different application. So the base rate, the base application rate is point five meters per square meter. The upper length that we asked for is two point five meters per square meter. The low volume road that your dead ends and trip roads like how we do your room, I can't so right now, it's like five cars a day. We get the, they get, we get that at point five, it's in a force. Your higher volume was like six and seven concession, that's more traffic, we go in higher, two point five, so it makes that kind of a balance. We may not be able to hit exactly on that five hundred, it just depends on the condition. Now, we can get that exact number, but we'll be building a lot of complaints for dust control and.
Well, the question, I believe, was just, you know, trying to stay closer to the budget.
That's right, and I'm just giving you the, just for information purposes, if we stay at the budget, which is fine, because you're a hundred eight thousand, we'll back off the application rates. They're minimums, and we'll stick with the dollar figures, it's just, we're gonna end up with.
Maybe.
It may, yeah, I mean, it may not, yeah.
There's protection.
Yeah.
Any other comments in this particular item? They're very.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I don't want this to get complicated, so I intended to be a simple question, I hope it can be a simple answer. Um, I'm assuming that the tender went out before the impact of the, uh, consumer carbon tax came off fuel. That hasn't worked its way through diesel, that's what we fully get, understand that. Um, so, so is there, is it, would it be a good thing or a bad thing to go back and re-tender or? You know, is there enough of a, of a potential impact that we would expect them to adjust their price down or?
It'd be possible, I mean, time.
Right.
Um, like I said, with the seventh of April, we realistically want to start that bomb of stone in the first two, three weeks of, of that, that leaves off in May. If it had hit in early June, turnaround time would be challenging. You may end up in worse place, you might stake at a three seventy five or a five.
Yep, I don't know, right?
Yeah. That'd be the.
Just, I, I don't mind the answer, I just felt I had to please ask the question.
You only got one submission too.
This one is an extension of the existing contract.
Right.
Three plus one plus one, we did it last year. We started, I started to do a, build a new contract, and I built a C P I adjustment S P to cover up so that it goes with the, you know, and that's how I word it, but it's the blended call, so just the same way that, that's where you would serve year projections based on falling upward. So it'll be annually blended, so at that rate, it'd be three upon, it's in the last three months of the year for the quality. So it's set, so then we have the number for our budgeting, so we know ahead of time, purchase comes now and say, I guess so.
Trying to build that. So quick, all, if I may, so rather than doing re-tender and that type of thing, would I be right in thinking that really that comes down to the fuel surcharge? And if we continue to see that gas price, uh, adjustment both through diesel and that type of thing? Could we maybe try and achieve that type of saving through pressuring and saying, look, justify your fuel charge? You haven't, you haven't reduced it, everywhere else in the world complaining, you see what's going on with fuel. So maybe just keep an eye on that, I'd, I'd be happy to lead you with that.
Counselor Smith. The part of that fuel charge, if you recall, we had quite a discussion when we had this come back to us. To increase the cost is the fuel charge, and we made the comment, when the fuel cost comes down, it's as the price comes down. Well, no, that's, it's all like.
No.
No, it hasn't.
Anybody else?
No.
Or any? So, that the committee recommends to council to award the twenty twenty five supply and applied dust suppressants contract to Dali Group. And that council directs staff to complete the scope definition with the contractor to complete the work approved in the twenty twenty five operating budget. And that council authorized the mayor and clerk to execute a contract for the supply and apply dust suppressants with Dali Group for the quoted price plus the township's portion of the H S T as presented in report P W dash twenty five oh six, all in favor? And that's carried. Okay, six point nine roadside mowing, could I get a mover and seconder for that? Counselor Smith, Mayor Earl. That was pretty straightforward, is there any staff, um, comments on the mowing?
You can, um, start the middle of ten. React to the, sorry, two.
Okay. I don't see any hands, so. That, uh, the committee recommends to council to award twenty twenty five roadside mowing contract to Dale Stewart and Sons. And that council directs staff to complete scope definition with the contractor to complete the work approved in the twenty twenty five operating budget. And that council authorized the mayor and clerk to execute a contract for roadside mowing with Dale Stewart and Sons for the quoted hourly prices plus the township's portion of the H S T as presented in report P W dash twenty five dash oh seven, all in favor? That's carried. Six point ten, the annual gravel maintenance tender results, can I get a mover and seconder on this one? Counselor Brayton and Counselor Renault. Do you wanna, uh, give us some insight, Chris?
I'd love to. So for this one, um, again, the, the calculations are a little, and I'm not sure how, uh, public works staff did it, but they came within six, the tender came in with about six hundred and twenty seven dollars of the, of the, what was budgeted?
It's a merit.
It's a merit.
Blew, blew.
I, I, I don't, maybe, maybe you guys do have a crystal ball.
That's a good point.
So just for clarification for everybody, the portion of H S T that is non-refundable to us because we pay it and then we claim it back for the, so when we budget, we budget, uh, one point zero one seven six. So of the thirteen percent H S T, we pay one point seven six percent.
And that's, that's reflected?
That's reflected in budget figures.
Which is what I believe the question was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, but I feel like there, there's, there's questions about a eight thousand dollar variance in the budget, and there isn't because the budget is bang on to what's.
Because the G S T's in it.
Because the H S T portion is, 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 so.
Calculated.
Yes.
And in, in the email, the rate was used, that was used, uh, was, was erroneous, it was three point nine percent rather than one point seven six.
And she's saying it's one point seven.
Yeah.
Yeah, so just for. Um, I think that was it on the gravel tender. There was other questions, you want me to continue on or do you wanna deal with it?
Uh, do you wanna, I'll just carry on and finish the gravel. Was there any, uh, Counselor Brayton?
Yeah, and, and sure, you're the Royal, are you using all that for maintenance or do you keep some of that for, for a road here and there or whatever, for later on sort of thing? Is that all, go ahead, want that, that all delivered on the roads now?
We're looking to deliver it all on the roads now.
So does he, does he treat you the same, at the same price if you, say you put all your stone on the roads, this here? You need eight or ten loads of stone, does he give you the same price as this or does he charge you another price?
No, so I ran the tender, I got, I don't, different than I have done in the past, but I went around, I found, uh, about eighteen different identicals for stone tenders, that when I built this one, and I put it into the schedule. So we modified it this year to try and keep it tracked a little better, and we actually, for the schedule A component, which is the granular maintenance piece, we actually, Josh, when we assessed all the roads and we worked together and we figured out, to get to the, that's supposed to be good to the exact same, how much we're gonna put on. So now we have a total for each road, so that at the end of these day, they'll know how close they are, if they, and if they have any extra left over or not. Um, that's the idea, and then the schedule B portion, was, or like I talked about earlier, it's the F O B piece, so when we go to pick it up, it's a different bike. And I had it structured so that they gave us prices for each individual quarry, so that the guys can go to wherever's closest at the best price. So it doesn't make sense for them to drive from Kipitland one to the Far Edge Quarry in Brockville because it's four cents cheaper. But I mean, use all that time, you lost a month, so they can go to Wilson's out there, or if they're working on the second concession, they can just slip over to Woodchore here and get the stone, or just have them drive across the country, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just wondering if he treated this the same, or the same price as a big quantity is.
The F O B, the F O B prices are better. Is that answering your question?
Yeah.
I just wonder.
All righty, I don't see any other hands going up. So that the committee recommends to council to award tender P W twenty twenty five dash zero one to G Tackery and Sons Construction Limited. And that council directs staff to complete scope definition with successful contractor to complete the work approved in the twenty twenty five budget, and that council authorized the mayor and clerk to execute a contract for the supply of granular materials, R F T, P W dash twenty twenty five dash zero one. For the supply of granular material with G Tackery and Sons Construction Company Limited for the tendered prices plus the township's portion of the H S T as presented in report P W dash twenty five zero eight, all in favor? That's carried. All righty, thank you for all those tenders, and we'll move on to item, sorry, is there somebody else? Oh, right, right, yes.
I can just finish, there's just a couple things, the, uh, the communication piece. Yes, and of course, uh, as Royal could have stated, he and Josh have worked hard at getting the roads that they're planning on doing. Our communications manager has a communications plan, and these are some of the things that, that are coming forward, particularly with the new website. She's got a plan to do, uh, on capital projects with, with Josh, she's got that, if you, we certainly could put more of this information for public consumption on the website for sure.
That would be great, um, the more, the more the public is informed or can get easy access, you know, they like that.
Um, and then I guess that was answered, annual gravel maintenance, the capital is in separate budget, this is for the operating, operation. And as far as putting the H S T in report, I find it may. And as far as putting the HST in the report, I find it makes the reports very confusing. There's already a lot of numbers on them. But if council wishes for me to break down that or if you're just going to trust the staff are building their budgets with that. One point seven six in it. The, I will leave that up to you guys. They do some modifications to the reports. I just, it's more lines than more numbers.
I think it was just clarification. Would you not, those bear bills?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I'm just suggesting very slight variation on, on what's, okay. Now, having heard what you said, I can understand the point about, you know, too many of them being confusing. I, I wouldn't think, I'm sorry, I, I think it wouldn't hurt to have a long line that indicates what the variance is, good or bad. So, so after the smoke is all settled, if we said this is going to be three hundred fifty thousand in the budget and after all the tenders and HST is paid and everything else, we're six hundred dollars to the good. Be nice to just have a line that says this is six hundred dollars under budget or we're two thousand dollars over budget.
Okay. Sorry, sure, you too, Mayor. So the reports generally do that. The, I know, I know I need to get more of them. And probably for this committee and the whole meeting, I should have done a finance year to date for two thousand twenty-five. I promise for the next committee of the whole meeting, I will give you some of the equipment because I think that's what is missing. When we had the committee structure before, those detailed reports went to those committees. We don't have any committees anymore. So I'm going to make an effort and maybe have to put a reminder in my calendar for committee of the whole meetings that I spit out something that has the variances as we're going through the years. At, at, at least once a month.
That would be appreciated, yeah.
Yeah, and, and I like that for sure. I'm thinking just around the, the tender reports. So for instance, the questions were asked and then Royal was able to use all kinds of detail and then sort of match, you know, what I've done roughly by going back to the February report. It's just the, it's just a sniff test on, all right, sometimes some of these numbers get varied. What portion is this tender of the overall amount? We don't have a reference point. So, so even if we don't have a reference point, if we just know, okay, well, these tenders amount to, we're just going to pick a completely arbitrary number, thirty-six thousand dollars under budget. Great. Then we can start talking about, well, is that really a surplus fund or, well, no, it's not because, you know, we may need that thirty-six and more. But we can't even have that discussion if we don't know what the number is and whether it's a plus or a minus. So that's all. Thanks.
I respect that you want to have that opportunity, but you committed that money to capital project. So I think that discussion, if we had the end of, or in the third, end of the third quarter. To know, right, that not as they're coming forward, because if you want to take your thirty-six thousand example, you want to say, oh, we use that thirty-six thousand for something else. Well, then you pull it out of the corporate road budget and then we hit that pickup. And it's like, oh, we could use that thirty-six, but it's not building a surplus fund for public work, but we do have lots of work that we could apply that to. And, you know, at the, in the October, September, October window, when we've got, if we're doing some updated reports of where we're tracking along for, for finance. We can say, you know, we've realized seventy-five thousand dollars. We've got these three culvers that, you know, why you guys can do them. And you guys can go ahead and do it versus already having spent that money in life or you know, that's it. I just comment.
So, so I think there's a fair trade to be made. So I guess we need to resist the, the urge to, to say, oh, yay, take away from you. But I think there's an opportunity for us to demonstrate our duties of oversight. So that if one says, you know, it's ten thousand dollars more than we expected. Then a reasonable question from us would be, all right, do you have any idea at this point how you're going to mitigate that, right? And so, so maybe that's a better balance. Thanks.
Counselor Mr. Hoff.
I know this is done and we're wrapping up, but like, I'm looking, I can't speak for everybody. I look at this from a thousand foot view. And I'm thoroughly impressed with the responses from staff on the road level, on the ground level responses. I don't want to micromanage, but it really is enlightening for us to hear some of the. Billy daddling you do to get to the, serve us and our community well. Like I, I picked up a lot of information from all of you, so I appreciate that. Even though discussions are tough because we're asking questions that put pressure on you right now, but you do well in answering them. So, thank you.
Christine.
Can I just say, it was nice to have questions. Because then we all. Instead of asking questions in the middle of a council meeting with no warning to staff and all we can say is, I'll check on that. Because we don't have an answer. It's wonderful to have the questions.
All righty. Okay, so we will move into correspondence. And there was a sponsorship request from the Leeds County Plowings Association. Could I get a mover in secondary? Counselor Smith and then Counsel, Mayor Burrow. About some discussion. Anybody want to give the money to the Plow, Plow Association?
I'll go to Counsel Bruno.
Counsel Bruno.
Well, it is something that we have done every single year. So when, kind of just drop. Yeah, I think that's, well, I'm not sure if it was before COVID or. Yeah, I think when this is Shane. No longer to me. Yeah.
Counselor Smith.
Yeah, we, as, as Counselor Bruno stated, we've done this in the past and, and. I think, you know, dollar amount that I, some backlog, I may be going back through the, the book, but I don't think we were a gold sponsor or anything like that. But we did sponsor a quarter or ad or something like that in there, brochure. And he doesn't tell us anything in here either about order ads and the, we just pay this, you know, spot that just says, here's your bronze, silver, gold, platinum.
So would there be appetite to go with, say, a hundred and fifty dollar donation? In the room, which is a silver? Mayor Bruno.
So, yes, but, uh, so yes, I have that app, but I don't think wrong with the amount. The but is if staff were given the opportunity to go back and, and, you know, pick up where we left off and we find that we're a gold sponsor. I would hate to only give them a hundred fifty dollars now, but, but we're picking it back up. You know, I would suggest three hundred dollars.
Laying, laying the tariffs.
Yeah, I just, I don't want to be undersponsored.
Really sorry, Mr. Bruno. I'll be a chance. Um, through you, um, I would, and rather than using the word donation, use sponsorship. The donation is you're giving the money without any expectation, whereas if there is a, then we should be sponsoring to get the ad or whatever it is. Counsel Bruno.
I think they used to put, uh, they used to print a book. Always. I think now they have gone to online. But I'm, I'm surprised it's not here, uh, what you get for, for sponsorship. And perhaps that's the question. We could set a mount or. Direction, but ask the question, what, what's? What do we get?
Would you be able to call those, or, uh, Counselor Smith?
I think I was going to say the same thing to staff. Could you follow up and get back to us for our council meeting? And again, give us an idea of what your sponsorship package is. And then I think we'd have a fair, okay.
Okay. All right, so. You've got, you've got, got it figured out there with what Counselor Smith said, so. I'll just call a question. All in favor of doing that? That's good. We're passed. Informational items. Counselor Smith.
Thank you, Chair. First, I want to go back to our, for that, the gate repairs across the Bowery Town Harley project for all of our town. So can we get that information on, on our website as well? So our residents are well aware they're in the meeting because there's only one meeting and it's been Bowery Town at the meeting. Just in case there's people on Highway Two, Long Beach, Rockmere Cliff Drive, in the parkway, that may not be well aware of what's going on. Informational items, so last pancake breakfast in Frankl this Saturday.
Toledo.
On Toledo, Toledo, Toledo. Fish fry and the linchfire hall on the twenty-seventh. Now, if you, if you want more fish, you can go to the Leeds in the same night, okay, the fish fry, okay? So you pissed out, but anyways, uh. There, they, they're doing things.
One's ours.
That's the twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh with the fire.
Yeah. That's twenty-seventh fire hall, twenty-seventh and Toledo. The only thing is Toledo is chicken, is fish. Fire hall is fish or chicken. So we want chicken there and then go do your fish on there. I don't want to promote for the, I only got one on the same day.
Okay, and I don't think we have any public question period, so. Can I get a mover in secondary for adjournment? Counselor Smith, Counselor Mr. Hoff. That the committee of the whole meeting adjourned at eight fifty-seven PM, all in favor? Thank you.
You want me to stay in the, in the seat and I'll run the council meeting from here or you want me to?
Whatever you want.
I'm, I'm also, I think it's not so good that you can. Well, you know, so, so as soon as the council meeting is over, but it was a, like, um, I, it was looking like nobody affected for the same time. So I'm suggesting the voters.
That's, that's Tuesday, right?
Yeah, that's Tuesday. I know, but a bunch of people are taking a, if she goes volunteering for the license, so we're very well sponsored. Sorry.
I thought you said it then, hotter. I mean, I didn't see that.
That's all I saw was Monday was okay.
All set? Okay. Uh, so I'll go ahead and call the special meeting of council to order. This is beginning after our committee of the whole meeting, which Counselor, uh, only, uh, only chaired for us. Please note that council chambers are currently open to the public. Meetings will continue to be live streamed and available for public viewing on YouTube. As part of the virtual public participation, if you have any questions regarding items on the agenda, please submit them by email to mail at E K T W P dot C A. Questions received prior to the meeting will be addressed during the question period, which is limited to fifteen minutes. We begin this special council meeting by acknowledging that we are meeting on the traditional territory of the Algonkin First People. We do so respecting both the land and the indigenous people who continue to walk with us through this world. Before I get into the adoption of the agenda, I have a couple of announcements. I think everybody will already know this, but. We have a couple of passings recently that I'd like to recognize. Former counselor of the township, Heatherdale Flood, passed away recent, recently. Of course, I didn't have the, the pleasure of knowing her, but I've heard some very pleasant things about her in the meantime. And also Ruth Lockett, the counselor on the Prescott Council. And known to this township through various means, not the least of which was that she and sisters, sister, were the ones that sold us our now, occupied us a role properly. So if, if I may, if you would just stand for a moment, since in our Florida. With that, I will seek a mover in secondary then for adoption of the agenda. The, by Counsel Brayton, second by Counsel Bruno, that the special meeting, council agenda, that is April seventh, two thousand twenty-five, be adopted. All in favor? Carries, thank you. The member had an inferior interest that starts to, uh, tonight's agenda? Name seen none, then, to move on to matters arising from our April seventh, two thousand twenty-five committee of the whole meeting, which has concluded. We do have one motion coming out of there. Uh, the motion is that coun, uh, that council direct staff to, to advertise the position of manager of public works. On the Association of Municipalities of Ontario website and on the Municipal World Job Board as per report A dash twenty-five dash twenty-one. Received during the April seventh, two thousand twenty-five committee of the whole meeting, looking for a mover in secondary please. Moved by Counsel Smith, second by Counsel Brown. All those in favor? Oh, yes, certainly. Sorry, go ahead. I do. Applying for, or, or, working, uh, looking for this individual. Our current director of public works, he's leaving the job or is he just going down? Go ahead.
Uh, through your worship. He does not want to continue in the manager role. So he will go back to one of the positions below. He's, he's going to do that. He's going to stay in the position until we recruit the manager, the manager position. And as we've talked through those sessions, we're looking at doing some reorganization and some restructuring. So there will be additional positions for him to go to.
But this new position, I'll just ask, does it threaten Royal's position? Or which position?
Erme, which new position?
Well, uh, this new person. That we're. The, the position already exists.
Yeah.
And so the, the person that currently holds that position is not interested in continuing on with it. And as for our policy, we're going out to advertise openly, anybody who works for us is also eligible to enter the competition to, to fill that position.
Were staff aware that we were doing this?
Yes, I spoke to them last week.
Yes, all, all public works staff.
Okay. So I, I, I went through all public work staff with the. Proposal that we put, that you did, you'd agree to at the last closed session. I would clarify one thing. The public works compliance and technical advisor position, which Royal currently holds, is not in the new structure. So if we move to the new structure and we.
I was going to say, we can refer to, to your positions, we can refer to structure. I would caution that we're still in an open sense. And so we need to refrain from discussing individuals that can be identified. So we're, we're sort of right now at that edge. So for the questions, we'll have to, to see about a, a closed session at some point, but we're sort of right along that edge.
This isn't closed right now?
No, this is an open session.
If anybody can.
So, so we, we now are receiving the recommendation from the committee.
In open, a special meeting?
Yes, to advertise the, the position. Yeah, and later on in the second meeting.
I thought, I, my apologies, I thought we were closed.
That, that's okay. And, and, and the nature of your questions were fine up to a point, but we reached that.
Thank you. I will stop.
Yep, Counsel Brown.
Just further to what Counselor Brayton was talking about. So would this position be advertised on our website?
Yes, because, and we'll post it through our social media networks. So our LinkedIn, Facebook. Twitter. Accounts will all, this.
So that's another way to spread the word locally because we don't have time to get a recorded times ad. Okay, thanks.
Okay, anybody else before all those questions? Okay, all those in favor then? Carries, thank you. Uh, so don't imagine that we received any public questions through email. How does that be? Questions, so then we move on to our whole meeting. Motion is special meeting of council adjourned at nine oh six PM. Regarding one matter under section two thirty-nine subsection two E of the municipal act litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local board. Affecting the municipality or local board, specifically Coonzerro development. And one matter under section two thirty nine subsection two B of the municipal act. Personal matters about an identifiable individual, including human, sorry, including municipal or local board employees. Specifically human resources notice of retirement. Okay, a mover and seconder doing movement, please. Move by Counsel Renault, second by Counsel.
We still have stream. Which like to know that.
Okay. So, so we now have our technology glitch resolved. We're about to go. Into a closed session. The only business that we'll have to deal with after our closed session is to report out, which we will do in the minutes. And we will then be passing our confirmatory bylaw. So at this point, we will end.